Well, it looks like it is 6:00. Good evening. All right. Good evening. We're the Eugene Planning Commission, and tonight we will be holding a public hearing on an appeal of the hearings official's decision to deny four concurrent applications consisting of a zone change, tentative PUD, traffic impact analysis, and standards review, which make up the Laurel Ridge PUD request. First, I'd like to introduce the planning commissioners, and maybe if we start with Commissioner Baker, and we'll just work this way.
Stephen Baker.
John Borowski.
John Jaworski.
And I'm Bill Randall.
John Belcher.
Jeff Mills.
Rick Duncan.
Thank you. Before I begin the hearing, I need to go over the hearing procedures. The decision of the planning commission on this appeal is quasi-judicial proceeding, so we will use the quasi-judicial format for this public hearing in accordance with applicable code requirements. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to review relevant testimony on the appeal before us. We will not be making a decision on the appeal tonight. I want to remind everyone that your testimony must be directed toward the appeal issues and relevant criteria. Also, no new evidence pertaining to appeal issues can be accepted by the planning commission. The planning commission can only accept argument and analysis related to evidence that is already in the record. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted one of these green forms, Request to Speak, to staff. If you wish to speak and you've not already done so, please submit that form now. Once the public hearing is opened, speakers will be called in the following order: those in support of the application, those with a neutral position, and those opposed to the application or in support of the appeal. The applicant and the neighborhood representatives organized in opposition to the application will each have up to 30 minutes to provide testimony. All others wishing to testify should limit their testimony to three minutes. And I'm assuming someone on staff can time that for us, or should we do that? We can. Okay. Most of us have iPhones, so we can do that. At the end of testimony, we will ask for any staff response, and then the applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal. Next, I must remind everyone that the failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to allow the planning commission and parties to respond will preclude further appeal on that issue. Before we begin, Eugene Code Section 9.706.5 requires that planning commissioners disclose any conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, or biases, abstentions, or challenges to impartiality. Do any commissioners have anything to disclose? Commissioner Duncan.
Again, my name is Rick Duncan. I have an appraisal firm in town by the name of Duncan &amp; Brown, and we completed a market study on this property approximately a year and a half ago, having to do with possible rent levels and so on. It doesn't affect my decision-making.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioner Mills.
I'm Jeff Mills. I live on Moon Mountain Drive in the Laurel Valley adjacent property and have been approached by some neighborhood members who are canvassing to make sure everybody was aware of it, had brief conversation with them, probably also read or at least scanned through the newspaper article on this. So neither of those occurrences will affect my judgment in this case.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Also, out of respect for all here tonight, I would ask that you please silence your cellphones and refrain from any outward displays of approval or disapproval during tonight's testimony. And now, planning staff will provide a brief staff report before we begin testimony.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Steve Oakes with City of Eugene Planning. I'll take a few minutes to provide a summary of the application process so far, key events or issues, and raise some key considerations for you going forward. No staff report was produced for this hearing due to timeline considerations. The issue before you is an appeal of the hearings official denial of the Laurel Ridge PUD, PDT 12-2, TIA 12-6, SDR 12-5, and Z 12-2. This proposal includes a zone change from AG to R1 to facilitate a multi-phase residential development on 122 acres for a total of 608 dwelling units. This includes both single-family and multifamily units. Dedication of open space and related infrastructure. These applications are all being reviewed concurrently through the Type III process. The appeal of the hearings official decision is included in the appeal statement that was forwarded to the planning commission on Friday. The planning commission must determine if the hearings official aired in his review based on the facts before you in the official record. The staff's initial recommendation in this case recommended denial of all four applications. The staff report found that the applicant's zone change proposal was not consistent with the metro plan as it ignored the parks and open space designation in the plan diagram. The staff report found the tentative PUD did not comply with numerous criterion related to refinement plans, natural resource preservation, tree preservation, geotechnical analysis, compatibility, emergency access, street standards, and a number of other criterion. The staff report also found that the traffic impact analysis did not provide the facilities necessary to accommodate the traffic impact of the proposed development as required. In the hearings official decision, he denied the zone change as a threshold issue, noting that without the zone change, to a zone that allows the development, the other applications cannot be approved. To obtain approval for the zone change, NPUD requires an accommodation of the parks and open space metro plan designation. He also found that it did not provide -- oh, he did not provide an advisory decision opining on all the criteria that might have been applicable in the PUD, TIA, and standards review. But he did additionally find that the PUD did not meet the first criterion, which is in regards to metro plan consistency. The hearings official also denied the zone change in finding that the metro plan diagram reflects the specific intent of the city council to adopt the open space designation on that property in that location. And he also found that if the Laurel Hill land use diagram shows all low density, then it contradicts the metro plan and the metro plan controls. He also found there was no ambiguity, as implied by the applicant, in making their legal argument that the Knutson case would resolve. On Friday, the applicant filed an appeal asserting that the hearings official aired in finding that part of the site is designated parks and open space, and also asserting that other applications should have been approved. Additionally, staff wants to clarify two issues that the applicant mischaracterizes in the appeal statement. The applicant asserts that if they are right on the zoning issue, they are automatically entitled to other approvals. If the planning commission finds the hearings official was wrong in regards to the zone change, the planning commission will have to look at the other applications. There is no automatic approval. The applicant also asserts that the initial staff report was somehow not complete or should have provided conditions in initial report. The staff report did not include conditions for a reason. This was based on the nature and number of criterion that were not met. The application would have been needed to modify it so drastically that there was no reasonably conditioning this application to approve it. Since the appeal, staff has received one letter of testimony, which has been submitted into the record and was put up at your spots there. It's an email from Paul Conte. Up to this point, the applicant has granted extensions totaling 227 days, making October 22, 2013, the last day to have a final decision on the applications. We had a question from Commissioner Duncan asking staff how we typically address split-designated properties in a zone change. Typically, an applicant would provide evidence and arguments where the designation would be based on metro plan and refinement plan information. This can vary greatly. Some refinement plans are very detailed, tax lot by tax lot, others not as much. So it is very, I guess, project-specific. And then staff would review and provide a recommendation based on that review, and then the hearings official, like in this case, would then decide the correct placement of that. With that introduction and those issues raised for your consideration, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Okay. Thank you. I will now open the public hearing with the applicant and those in support of the application. And I have, for the applicant, Bill Close and Rick Satry. And we'll allow the applicant 30 minutes. [inaudible] 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 Good evening, commissioners. My name is Rick Satry. Principal with Shermer Satry Group, land use planners, landscape architects, environmental specialists. Our address in Eugene is -- we're in the historic Whitaker neighborhood. We're at 375 West Fourth Avenue, Suite 201. And if you could speak into the microphone a little more. I know the sound in here is not the best. Thank you. We'll do our best. Is it picking up? Can the audience hear him? Yeah. Okay. First of all, I'd like to begin by saying that the applicant representative, Mr. Ralph Naumann, couldn't be here tonight. He sends his apologies. He's out of town on business. But Mr. Close and I will represent the applicant. We understand that the applicant has 30 minutes. I will take 10 minutes. Mr. Close will take 10 minutes. And we'll reserve the final 10 minutes because we would like to encourage the planning commissioners to ask any questions that you might have at that point during our presentation. If not, then we'd have a few closing comments towards the end of that 30 minutes. I'll begin by sharing with you -- I'd like to direct you to the handout. You'll find that there are three stapled components to the handout. First one, there's a number 1 in the upper right-hand corner. We'll begin with that one. This first handout is just an abbreviation of some of the plan sheets that were in the application package that's on the record. There was a question early on about orientation, where the heck is Laurel Ridge site in respect to the Eugene community? So we're looking at these five sheets to just talk a little bit in general about the location and the setting for the property itself. You'll find on the first sheet, you see the Laurel Ridge hat diagram there in the middle. We're roughly at the south end of the Laurel Hill Valley, immediately north of the ridge line, which is also the urban growth boundary, immediately north of Spring Boulevard, just due east a little bit from the 30th Avenue-Spring Boulevard intersection. If you look at the second sheet, you'll see an air photo that was made available off the City of Eugene website. This photograph was taken early in 2008. It's the most current we could find in the early springtime of the year. It's an excellent photograph. You see the thin yellow lines. The site is comprised of two tax lots. You see the site is comprised primarily of a mix of oak and fir and a fair amount of open space or thinned or logged canopy. If you look at the third sheet quickly, you'll see that the site is not a pristine site. It was logged initially in 1944, again in 1947, logged somewhere between 1960 and 68, and then as late as 1994, '95, it was then heavily thinned. It has some Golf 5 resources. Those are the blue indications on the third sheet, which is labeled Sheet 2.1 in the lower right-hand corner. Most of those are along the north property line. You see some yellow area. Those are existing public utility easements containing a combination of overhead and underground utilities. Significantly, you see a network of tan-colored squiggly lines all over the site. Those are remnant logging roads. Those are an important component of the planned unit development proposal in that we use, to a very large degree, those existing impacted zones, those remnant logging roads for new local streets. The fourth sheet was the first sheet in our site analysis submittal. This represents primarily slope. The greener the area, the flatter the slope, so you can get a sense of the landform. It also indicates topography, elevation, and significantly, sort of the context of the ripply north and west-facing slope of the site itself. Lastly, in this first handout, on the fifth sheet of handout number one, you see a context. Air photo showing the neighborhood and a little bit more. Significant here is the dark green are existing public open spaces: Laurel Golf Course, Hendrix Park, Ribbon Trail, Moon Mountain, Bloomberg Park, and off on the west side of South Springfield, you have the Doris Ranch Park. What's important here is that you see the lighter green areas on the project -- on the development site are proposed open space dedication that's in our proposal. You'll notice in the application that we're proposing some 76 acres. 63 percent of the entire site is proposed as open space. Of that, nearly 33 acres is proposed to be dedicated to the City of Eugene as public open space. You may have noticed that as you've had a chance to review the application. Second handout, number two, represents a series of six different site plans that have been generated over the last two years. So why six different handouts? Or why six different site plans? Through six site plans, three submittals, three completeness review processes, two neighborhood meetings, the applicant has been consistent in its interpretation that the entire 121.68 acres is appropriately and correctly designated low-density residential in the metro plan and in the neighborhood refinement plan. And it has been consistent in exercising its right to propose five dwelling units per acre. The 5 DU per acre cap is already a limitation below the normal low-density residential upper limit of 14 DU per acre. The 5 DU per acre cap is a part of the South Hills Study adopted in 1973, so it's been around a while. But we've been consistent in our acreage. We've been consistent in the 5 DU per acre. And staff to date has not yet said that the 121 acres is the wrong acreage to use. And so we were a bit concerned when, at last, during the staff report that went to the hearings official, staff for the very first time said that part of the site was indeed parks and open space and needed to be zoned, parks and open space. Throughout the entire two-year process, the open space conversation was front and center. It was significant in all of our applications and our completeness review processes. But we were always talking about open space within the context of the planned unit development application. Thus, we have 76 acres. 63 percent of the site is proposed at open space. And again, nearly half of that, nearly 33 acres, is proposed to be dedicated to the City of Eugene for public open space. Then lastly, the third handout. Third handout, Mr. Close will address in more specificity, but it contains the top three sheets are excerpts from the adopted Laurel Hill refinement plan. Bring your attention to the third sheet of the third handout, the one with the yellow highlight, Section 2 of the findings. It says that the land use diagram included in the Laurel Hill plan update is hereby adopted as a refinement to the Eugene Springfield Metropolitan Area General Plan. It was adopted in July of 1982, where the comprehensive plan was initially adopted in 1980. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Close.
Members of the commission, I'm Bill Close. I get to talk about all the exciting new stuff. I'd like to make a couple --
Could you also speak into the microphone, please?
I have a microphone.
Thank you.
I would like to make two comments in response to the staff's introductory remarks. Staff said that somewhere in our appeal, we represented that if we have the zoning R1 -- excuse me, if we have the plan designation, low-density residential, then we are automatically entitled to approval of the PUD. I don't think I said that anywhere in my appeal statement. That's not true. If we're right about the plan designation, then we're entitled to the zoning, and then we have to approve up on the PUD. Secondly, probably the most significant thing I heard from staff was they, in response to Commissioner Duncan's question, "Hey, staff, what do you do if you have a split plan designation on a piece of property?" And what staff concluded by saying was, "Well, we get all the information in, and then we make a recommendation as to where that line is on the property." They haven't done that here. I came late to this process. I got involved just before the hearings official. A year and a half came before I really showed up and started working on this. The thing that has simply confounded me is that after spending upwards of half a million dollars over three years doing the environmental baseline analysis, preparing this application, getting all the expert reports, putting the application on the table, and then working with the city staff for a year and a half on that application, doing six -- sitting with staff and listening to them and doing six different site plans, the staff has never once told the applicant where the staff believes the line falls on this property, demarcating low-density residential to the north and parks and open space to the south. It's not there. If staff had done that, we might not be here tonight. And I do think they have to do it. This is not our plan. This is the city's plan. It's the city's metro plan diagram. It's the city's Laurel Hill refinement plan diagram. It's the city's obligation to read that plan and tell us where those lines are. And then the applicant comes in and makes an application for zoning consistent with that plan. If we don't know where that line is between low-density residential in the north and parks and open space in the south, we're guessing. It's the old "under which shell lies the pea" issue. And so that, to me, is the major problem in this entire process. And I think you really have an obligation. I think you have an obligation to give the applicant the R1 zoning for whatever portion of this property is planned designated low-density residential. We think we understand where that is. We think it's the south property line, and we're entitled to it for all of it. If staff -- but let me put it so it's your plan, belongs to you, belongs to the staff, you tell us where it is. We haven't seen that line drawn yet. That's my major big point. You know, that's why we have such a problem with this application. Now, let me shift gears a little bit and talk about where we think the line is. We think the line between parks and open space, plan designation, and the low-density residential plan designation is at our south property line, which is the urban growth boundary. And that is based on previous case law that explains how to read the metro plan diagram in situations where it is not clear. And I quoted on my first page of my appeal statement the critical language from the Court of Appeals case in Knutson versus City of Eugene. I love that case because I did it. And a little background on that. Our position is that the rule stated by Luba and the Court of Appeals in the Knutson case applies here. And I'll summarize that rule in one sentence. The Court of Appeals says that where you have a boundary line between two plan designations close to a property line on the metro plan diagram, in that situation, the metro plan diagram is unclear. That's the word the Court of Appeals used. And you then go to the refinement plan to answer the question, "What is the plan designation?" And when you go to the refinement plan here, you find a diagram that shows low-density residential plan designation going all the way down to the urban growth boundary. Very simple, very clear. And Rick Satry just read to you from the resolution adopting the Laurel Hill refinement plan, the language from the city council saying, "Hey, folks, we're adopting this plan to further refine the metro plan diagram in this area." And that's -- we're just saying that when the city council said that, they were right. And if you give effect to that, then you have to conclude that the entire site is planned designated low-density residential, and we're entitled to our zoning, and we go forward from there. A few more words on the rule from Knutson, because I think it's the crankshaft of this application, or crankshaft of the sort of methodology for determining what the plan designation is. On the first page of my appeal, I've quoted the critical language in the Court of Appeals. The Knutson case involved an application to change the zoning on a two-acre piece of property on Coburg Road just north of Dairy Queen on the west side from something to commercial. And simple zone change. And staff said, "When we look at the metro plan diagram, we think that it's medium-density residential. It's not commercial." And we said, "No. It's commercial because you can't tell what it is from the metro plan diagram. You go to the refinement plan, and the refinement plan shows it red. It's commercial." Staff said, "No." The city attorney said, "No. It's medium-density residential. We agree with staff." The hearings official said, "It's medium-density residential." Denied. We appealed to the planning commission. The planning commission agreed with everybody else. And we went to Luba. And Luba said we were entitled to the zoning because the city was misreading its own metro plan diagram. And they articulated the rule, which the Court of Appeals then went on to affirm in really beautiful language, simple, plain English language. Not often you get that from the Court of Appeals. But there, on the first page of my letter, appeal letter, I'm quoting from the Court of Appeals, "A land use designation for properties near the boundary between use designations on the diagram is unclear." That's a single sentence that says we're right. "As indicated by the metro plan, those ambiguities require reference to the local government refinement documents to conclusively determine the applicable designation." That's the local refinement plan, just like the city council says. "Under those circumstances, there is no inconsistency between the metro plan and a refinement plan." The hearings official says there's a conflict. The Court of Appeals says there's not. "Instead, the refinement plan serves to resolve the inherent ambiguities that exist in a general diagram such as the metro plan diagram." Now, later in my appeal statement, I have a bigger quote, give you more context from the Court of Appeals. That's fun to read, too. But that right there is the essentials of it. The hearings official made a very simple mistake. The hearings official looked at the metro plan diagram, and he saw the urban growth boundary. This is 11 by 17 now. Saw the urban growth boundary, big fat black line. He saw a little smidgen of green sneaking above the urban growth boundary into the subject property. And then you got all the rest of the subject property. And he said, "It is clear from the metro plan diagram that some portion of this property is planned designated parks and open space." I'm starting with that as a baseline. Then he went to the refinement plan. He said, "Ha! Look at that refinement plan. It shows low-density residential going all the way south to the urban growth boundary. It's in conflict with the metro plan diagram. Apply the conflict rule. Ignore the refinement plan." So he asked the wrong question. He looked at a dividing line between two plan designations on the diagram and said, "It's clear that parks and open space encroaches into this property somewhere." And the Court of Appeals says, "No. When you have a boundary line between two plan designations near the property line, then by definition, it's unclear." Not clear, it's unclear. Then you go to the refinement plan. And if you go to the refinement plan, it says it's all low-density residential. That's the nut of it. And I'm probably at the end of my 10 minutes, almost. Good, couple more minutes. Never give up a chance to talk. Just to elaborate on this fuzziness of the metro plan diagram a little bit more, grab this handout that has the four metro plan diagrams. First two pages are from that very neat, clean, specific refinement plan. The first metro plan diagram sheet is from 1980, the very first adopted metro plan diagram. We draw -- you gave this to the hearings official. We draw a black circle around the area that includes the subject property. You can see the urban growth boundary there, that dash line where it crosses 30th Avenue. Go just to the right of that. You see that little smidgen of green? That's what we're talking about. But wait, there's more. Go to the next diagram. It changes. 1987. This is 1987 diagram, also officially adopted by the city. Same circle. There you have that urban growth boundary. Look at that little smidgen of green. Two things about this. The urban growth boundary line's not in the same exact place as 1980, and the green isn't exactly the same as 1980. And yet, the city didn't make any definitive changes about this subject property between '80 and '87. So then you go to the third diagram, 2004, officially adopted metro plan diagram. Under the housekeeping amendments, we shifted to a computer-based R-LID database, but it's still parcel-specific on only some locations. So this is like blobs printed by computers. It's just blobs printed by a paintbrush. Look at that circle. You see the urban growth boundary. It's changed a little bit again. And you see the green. It's a little bit different, encroaching into the property. A little bit different. So what you see is, going from one metro plan diagram to another, you see the urban growth boundary wiggling around a little bit, and you see the amount of green that's encroaching into this property wiggling out around a little bit. Where do you conclude from that? According to the Court of Appeals, you conclude -- According to the Court of Appeals, you conclude that it's not, it's unclear what the plan diagram, what the plan designation is for the subject property. And when the city adopted the 2004 housekeeping amendments, adopted this last diagram, they explicitly said, "In which situations, this diagram is parcel-specific." Definitive. Follow the lines on the diagram. They said which situations that was. This is not one of them. Everybody, it's a party of this proceeding agrees, the staff, the applicant, the hearings official, that we're subject to the subject property, this diagram is not parcel-specific, which means it's unclear. Which means the hearings official shouldn't be saying, "It's clear that there's some parks and open space here." Hearings official should be saying, "Ha! Boundary line between plan designations near a property line, unclear. Go to the refinement plan. Situation clear." So that's, that's the big picture. The hearings official has a number of arguments to support his conclusion that there is some parks and open space plan designation on the subject property. There are four or five. We address them at the end of our appeal. They are not legally correct. Some of them aren't factually correct. I don't want to get into that. I think this matter should be resolved based on the Court of Appeals rule in Knutson. And I'm over my ten minutes.
So we do have a little bit left of our ten minutes left. I'm not sure exactly how many. Nine more minutes, so.
Pretty good.
Very good, Bill. So at this point, if the commissioners have any questions at all of the applicant incumbent, we have a few more minutes to receive any of your questions. We encourage you, don't hold back. Ask anything that you might have. Looking for clarification, wanting to know where certain documents on the record may exist, anything at all.
Questions about the relationship between the metro plan diagram and refinement plans you always afraid to ask?
Commissioner Duncan?
I'd like to refer to this document. It's, you referred to it as SA 7.0. It was in your application, correct?
Yes.
Okay. You indicate that this was a map, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong in my reading, that this is your best guess on where parks and open space land is. And you refer numerous times in your, the documents you've submitted, that this line is close to the urban growth boundary. I'd like to have you comment a little on that because "close" is, I guess, a relative term. Some of this looks to be what one would think would be some distance. So without putting new information in the record, I'd like to have you just talk to me a little bit about why you believe this to be close. Am I okay?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna steal the answer on this. As a, as a matter of law, you can't say anything about the relationship between the subject property and that green blob. What the applicant's consultant did in a fit of cooperation early on in the process at the request of staff, they took the metro plan diagram and they blew it up and they dropped it on, they kind of fit it, tried to fit it to the subject property. And that's what you have. Now, that graphic is legally worthless because, as the Court of Appeals explained in footnote five of the Knutson decision, and I've got that quoted in here, you abs, I'm not, it's in the, it's in our final argument to the hearings official, and I think I've got the quote in my appeal statement, it is illegal to take the metro plan diagram and blow it up and fit it to a site to figure out what, what the plan designation is. The opponents, the dairy green folks, tried that in the Knutson case. You know, they, when they got to the Court of Appeals, they just took that metro plan diagram and they blew it up and they fitted the site and they said, "See? The medium-density residential falls on our property, not the commercial." And the Court of Appeals flagged that methodology in a footnote and said, "Uh-uh. You cannot do that according to the metro plan. It is only valid at eleven by seventeen scale." So that's really the answer. I mean, really, when you think about it, if you make yourself a, think of yourself as a surveyor engineer or something, what do you have? You've got a fuzzy metro plan diagram with a urban growth boundary line that keeps moving a little bit, diagram to diagram. One inch equals eight thousand foot scale. The little green keeps changing from metro plan diagram to diagram. And then you, you grab one of those and you say, "That's accurate. That fits something on the ground." And then you, you, you stretch, you start with a survey of the property and you take that fuzzy diagram and you stretch it across the site. It's like taking a big piece of latex rubber and stretching it across the site. It doesn't tell you anything about what the plan designation is or how far the plan designation encroaches.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Mills?
Yes, I just wanted to put the question to the applicant on the metro plan diagram and the supporting text that goes with that diagram, specifically section 2G-9 under Parks and Open Space. It, I'll just read a portion of this. You can locate it. "This designation also includes other privately-owned lands in response to metro plan policies such as the South Hills Ridge Line," and it misnamed some other ones. It goes on later to say, "Shown are several of the metro plan diagram. Those not yet in public ownership are based on environmental constraints," so on. "They should be preserved as possible through public acquisition or tax relief programs." And they speak to this. It's identified with text in addition to
Sure.
the color coding. There's some expansion of what the intent is there. How do you, how do you respond to that?
And, and that was one of the, the hearings official called that item out, that, that plan language out. And so we've addressed it in our appeal statement in some detail. To reduce that to a general comment, reading from the plan text, what kind of land a particular designation is appropriate to have it be put on, doesn't tell you exactly what the footprint of that plan designation is in any specific context. You, you, you can't, so for example, at this location, there is private land on the north side of the ridge line in the UGB and private land on the south side of the ridge line in the UGB. You can't tell from that, that language doesn't give you any guidance as to where the plant, the parks and open space designation actually stops at this location. I mean, I mean, if, if, if that were definitive about where the parks and open space designation goes, you would see that parks and open space designation traveling all the way to the west along the ridge line of the South Hills, and it's just not there.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? I think you might have a couple of minutes left if you would, would like, two minutes?
Let me wrap up by saying thank you very much. We'll be back up under rebuttal.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. We'll be back up under rebuttal, but let me say right now that you have, as been mentioned and as you well know, you have four independent applications before you. Each of those deserves its own due consideration. Each of those deserves its own independent decision. Staff sort of shortchanged us in their staff report. They focused on the zone change and then sort of petered out throughout the staff report. They did talk about the, all four applications. The hearings official did it more so. The hearings official's entire report focused on the zone change, and there is no mention of the other three applications until the very last summary paragraph. So we really believe that the applicant is due, due consideration of all four applications with their own decision. Lastly, there's an extensive volume of material on the record. We'd like to point you, to direct you in particular to the final argument that was submitted before the hearings official. You will find that the hearings, the final argument, we would suggest that you begin there. Read the final argument. From there, read the four written statements, the four narratives from each of the four applications, and then return to the final argument. You'll find in that final argument, everything that the applicant has addressed, every single applicable criteria, and there are findings that, that apply to every single criterion for all four applications in that final argument. That's really all you need to give those four applications due consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't have any other green slips of people wishing to testify in support. So looking around and seeing none, now we'll go to those speakers who have a neutral position. And I don't have any green slips from them either. I'm just kind of looking around. And then I believe now we will go to those speakers opposed to the application and we'll start with the neighborhood representatives. I have two slips, I believe, from Jean Malone, Jean Malone and Jared Margolis. And you will have a combined thirty minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jared Margolis. I am a research associate at the Environmental and Natural Resources Law Center at the University of Oregon School of Law. I live at 2070 East Twenty-seventh Ave. And just to give you some background, I am a land use attorney and I, and I teach environmental law. And I also have a master's degree in land use planning from Brown University. I did my master's thesis in GIS planning, so I have some background in how this process works. I want to point out just a couple of, of things. The applicant stated in their testimony just now that they believe that the, the city has an obligation to tell them where this line is on their property and that that wasn't done and so that maybe the city has an obligation to give them the zoning here. I just want to point out something on the metro diagram, metro plan diagram here. If you look at the bottom right-hand side of the metro plan diagram, the, there's some, some language there. And halfway through that, it specifically says, "The current plan designation, zoning, et cetera, for specific parcels should be confirmed with the appropriate governmental entity, Eugene Springfield or Lane County, with responsibility for planning and development of the parcel." That suggests that it's up to the developer to confirm where the line is on the property, not for the city to tell them. I don't believe that they ever asked where the line was on the property. But they seem to be saying now that they leave it to the city to determine where the line is. Well, the city has determined that the line is on their property. That's clear from the staff report to hearing officials' determination. Where the line specifically is on their property has not been determined yet. I don't know that it's been asked. But you did, Commissioner Duncan, bring to our attention a, an attempt that was characterized as actually something that came out early in the process. A map was produced in a fit of cooperation, as Mr. Clu said, which showed that it was, quote, "Close to the UGB," not, not potentially at the UGB. So I'm not quite sure what's going on here temporally, but they're saying that through this whole process, no one said this was on the property. And now they're saying that, well, early in the process, they produced a map that showed that it could be on their property. There's definitely a discrepancy there. But I would suggest to you that the, the obligation is on the applicant to determine where it is on their property, not for the city. However, I will also say that it is quite easy to determine where the line would be on the property. All you would do is use the same information that was used to delineate the polygon in the, the mapping. You would use elevation. This is a ridge line. This is a resource that's trying to be protected. The ridge line has a delineation based on elevation. You would use a GPS to go out into the field and determine where that line is on the ground that was delineated in the map. This is not an issue of there being an ambiguity. There is no ambiguity here. As staff and the hearing officer noted, this is a clear conflict. And if you look at the map itself, it becomes clear that there's a conflict here. There are many areas where the, where parks and open space line up perfectly with the urban growth boundary or with some other borderline area on some other boundary line. So clearly, there's the ability to do that. There are other areas where parks and open space does not follow a specific boundary. And clearly, that was intentional because those were delineating specific resources. The applicant has admitted that the urban growth boundary in this area was delineated based on the ridge line. The way you would do that is you would draw a line using the computer program at the highest elevation of the ridge line. If you're delineating then a park, an open space area around that's supposed to encompass that ridge line area and protect that resource, you would then draw a polygon at a certain lower elevation that would encompass that resource. By definition, that resource has to be on either side of the highest point of the ridge line. So by definition, the polygon encompassing the parks and open space has to be on either side of the urban growth boundary. It has to be on the north side as well as the south side. That's how these things are delineated. What's more, if the planning commission agrees with the applicant, the area, if you look at the area in question here, just to the north and east of Thirty-Fifth, the area that's designated as parks and open space there, if the line was pushed back to the urban growth boundary, and I will submit to you that it's clearly not ambiguous, and this is not a small smidgen, there's a large area that's been delineated here as specifically to be protected as parks and open space, the urban growth boundary goes through the middle of that, which makes sense. Like I said, the urban growth boundary would be at the very top of the elevation, the area that you're trying to protect as ridge line would then be around that. If the area was moved back to the urban growth boundary, we'd be losing about fifty percent of the area that's supposed to be protected as parks and open spaces. There is nothing in the 1982, by the way, refinement plan that suggests that it should be refining the 2010 metro plan map to reduce the protected parks and open space area by up to fifty percent. That doesn't make sense. And in fact, it would be inconsistent with the statements made in the actual Laurel Hill Plan itself, where the Laurel Hill Plan at page one specifically says that, "To the greatest possible extent, it is desirable to preserve the trees and other natural features to maintain the maximum extent of open space and to preserve the views and from the hill from obstructions." It further says later on in the plan, under Urban and Public Services, under Proposals Number Two, that the neighborhood desires help in requesting conservation easements and aid in establishing ribbon parks and trails to ring the valley on the east. It also says, under Neighborhood Goals Number Five, to encourage development and expansion of park facilities. The Laurel Hill Plan calls, specifically calls for expanding park facilities. Now, using the language of the applicant here, there was a goof-up. It was not a goof-up by the hearings official. It was a goof-up in 1982 when the Laurel Hill Plan was updated and parks and open space was left off. Clearly, it was not intended to be left off if they were to encourage development and expansion of park facilities. That was a mistake. That mistake has now led to a conflict between the refinement plan and the metro plan. And it's clear that in that case, the metro plan has to win out. I'm going to turn it over. Let me just check my notes and make sure I covered everything I wanted to cover. I'll leave it at that and I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Attorney Malone to discuss some of the legal aspects of this. And I might have a comment at the end or two. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. My name is Sean Malone. I have a brief response written up here to the appeal statement issued by the appellant. Unfortunately, I don't have copies for all the planning commissioners right now. So what this really boils down to is a simple legal issue. And that legal issue is whether the metro plan indicates that some portion of the property contains parks and open space. Now, there's this unique aspect here that the hearings officer, the staff, appellant and opponents all agree that some portion of parks and open space is north of the urban growth boundary. It's clearly evident. And that's the language that was used by Luba as well as by the Court of Appeals in the Knutson case. Is it clearly evident, looking at the metro plan, that there is some green, regardless of whether it's a smidgen or it's a lot or however we characterize that, is there any portion of that north of the UGB? Now, referencing the Knutson case, I think the rule of the law, the rule of law in the Knutson case is sound. It's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. The issue with the Knutson case is it's different facts than this case. The primary issue that is different is that in this case, we have a reference point. In the Knutson case, we had no reference point. It was three blobs sitting in the middle of a bunch of white on a map with streets located somewhere beyond that. And you couldn't tell where that specific piece of property in Knutson was because there was no street running through it or other reference points. In this case, we have two reference points, which clearly demonstrates that the area north of the UGB contains some parks and open space. And that's the urban growth boundary itself, and that's Thirty-Fifth Avenue. And beyond that, there's the issue of the metro plan text. Metro plan text controls over the diagram. And the metro plan text contains a policy related to the South Hills related to the South Hills ridgeline system, and that further supports our argument that there is parks and open space, as everyone in this room concedes, north of that UGB. And because it's clearly evident that there is some green north of that UGB line, there are no ambiguities, and so you don't even get to the refinement plan. That's where the appellant airs here, is trying to create ambiguity where there is none. In this case, it is clearly evident that this parks and open space is north of the UGB. Sorry for repeating myself so many times, but it's such a simple legal issue. If the Planning Commission has any other questions related to that, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Borowski.
You brought up in your testimony that the UGB is at the top of the ridgeline. Is there any proof of that in the record that shows that the UGB line follows the top elevation of the ridgeline?
In the metro plan itself, it specifically says at page 2G-13 that the UGB is based, says based partly on the cost of providing urban services to the metropolitan area, for example, ridge lines and other topographic features. And then on 2G-14, it goes on to specifically say that ridge lines are one of the ways of delineating the UGB. But more importantly, on page 2G-21, there's a map key to the UG boundary map, which is found on the previous page, which confirms that in that section of the UGB, they give letters delineating sections, that it was based on ridge lines. And I'm also giving you my experience as a professional GIS planner, the way you would delineate a boundary at a ridgeline would be to draw the line at the highest elevation, but it specifically says so in the metro plan.
Are you saying 2G or 2D?
G.
2G-13, 2G-14, and 2G-21?
21 is the map key that specifically says ridge lines were used to delineate the urban growth boundary in this area.
And that's in the record?
The metro plan itself should be.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
One last.
Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Belcher.
Sorry. Mr. Close points out that although the text of that policy says that the, that there should be parks and open space along the ridgeline, excuse, not the ridgeline itself, but yeah, basically, but he points out that there are other places along that ridgeline where there is not park and open space designation. Would you respond to that?
I would say, first of all, the metro plan clearly states that there's a South Hills ridgeline system as a policy. The fact that not every aspect of that ridgeline is not covered by parks and open space does not somehow negate that policy itself. There could be a variety of reasons why the city council has not designated particular portions, parks and open space as of yet, but it really does get back to this issue of the plan. A simple reading of Knutson will really bear this all out. Is there any portion of parks and open space north of that UGB? Everyone here agrees that yes, that's the case. It's clearly evident. There's no ambiguity. So essentially, we don't even have to go to the text. The diagram has borne that out for us all.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just add something to that, Commissioner? The fact that only certain areas are called out in the metro plan suggests that those areas were specifically targeted as natural resources that were in need of protection in order to protect the ridgeline and what wanted to be protected by the city as a ridgeline. That suggests that we need to be careful to make sure that what was intended on those diagrams, as the specific parts of those ridge lines that are in need of protection, remain protected. The applicant is trying to reduce that area by a large amount based on a refinement plan that is from 1982 rather than the 2010 plan, which specifically shows a large portion of that public parks and open space on their property above the urban growth boundary. So I think that the fact that the entire ridgeline is not designated parks and open space suggests that very specific areas were intended to be protected, and this commission should be careful to make sure that those remain protected.
Thank you.
I have one last point. To the issue of whether the metro plan is parcel-specific, I really believe there's a red herring here. If the simple fact that the metro plan was not parcel-specific created some sort of ambiguity, then the metro plan would essentially be superfluous. You would never look at it. You would just go to the refinement plan immediately. So why do we have this metro plan in the first place? We have this metro plan, the diagram specifically, in order to set out these broad guidelines, these objectives, these policies for the city. To throw our hands up simply because it's not parcel-specific would not give any effect to that metro plan diagram, the objectives, the policies, and so forth. So the simple fact is that we have to look to this metro plan diagram, use the reference points there if we can. In this case, that's the UGB and 30th Avenue, and in Knutson, that wasn't the case. We didn't have any reference points. Knutson is just clearly distinguishable on this one point of reference points. This allows us to look to the metro plan and give effect to those objectives, those policies, and that overarching guidance. And then I think my final point is throughout the various iterations of the metro plan diagram, 1980, 1987, 2004, and then the current one that's on the website, they all have some parks and open space north of the UGB. So again, it's clearly evident. And with that, unless there's any more questions, we would encourage the Planning Commission to affirm the hearings officer's well-reasoned 14, 16-page decision on really what amounts to one legal issue, and deny the appeal.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't have any green slips of any other people wishing to speak in opposition. Looking around. Okay. Staff response, follow-up?
Yes, the only, I guess the only follow-up we have is just to call the choice of words Mr. Satri used in talking about the staff report that was produced at the beginning of this process, which is 55 pages-ish without attachments. And just to note that the staff, in maybe shortchanging the applicant, also shared this as a word document so they could produce their final version. So they hopefully were able to add about 55 pages to it. So we'd like to add that to the record.
Okay. Now we have rebuttal from the applicant for follow-up.
We're changing sides here just to confuse you. I'll make a few comments, and then Rick will fill the holes that I missed. I, when I approach rebuttals on things like this, I do it by looking at the notes that I was scribbling during the opponent's presentation, and some of the notes I take, I put stars next to, so then I go down my little list of stars. I really liked what Sean Malone said about not, two things. One is that the rule in Knutson is still valid. I'm really glad he's on board with that. And I really appreciated his conceding that you don't need to look at the text of the metro plan in this instance to figure out what, where the dividing line is between low-density residential and the parks and open space plan designation. I agree with him on that. The discussion about the urban growth boundary and its relationship to the ridgeline, this is not a really simple issue. For starters, the text of the metro plan, in the portion of the metro plan that talks about where the UGB is, you kind of go around the whole metro plan area, and they've got it broken into segments, A to B, B to C, and so on. When you get around to this area, the text of the metro plan says, I'm not quoting verbatim, but pretty close, "The exact location of the urban growth boundary in this part of the metro plan area will be determined at the time of annexation." And that's what happened here. Two things you draw from that. One is that when you look at the metro plan diagram itself, and you see a big fat black dash line on there, which is the UGB, that doesn't relate to any exact footprint on the ground in the real world. And that's because the text of the metro plan says, hey, this is a ballpark. We'll figure out where the UGB is at the time of annexation. That's point number one. Point number two is, this site was annexed in 2007 by our client. Took a year to get through that process. A lot of back and forth with the city, and the boundary commission was in charge of that. We put into the record before the hearings official, a copy of the annexation order, and all of the supporting findings, and a map, the annexation map, which reduces the UGB to a meets-and-ground-bound line on the ground, a real-world line. So that's really what we're working with. That line on the annexation map is the urban growth boundary, not what's on the metro plan diagram. That's a ballpark. That's a swag to be figured out at the time of annexation, which happened in 2007. So again, this all relates to the general point that when you look at the metro plan diagram, inside that black circle, which we've noted on all three diagrams, everything's changed a little bit, year to year. Everything wiggles around a little bit. Nothing's firm-duped. It's generalized. That's point one, or maybe point two. The point was made by the first speaker that when you look at the refinement plan diagram, it shows no parks and open space. It must be a mistake. City Council made a mistake. Well, there's just no legal basis for that. I mean, the assumption is that that statement is, starting with the metro plan diagram and saying, "It is specific. We know for sure that there is parks and open space plan designation on this property." And then it looks at the refinement plan and says, "Ah, I must be wrong." That reflects the same error the hearings official made, which is to assume you can make a clear statement about what is on that, what the metro plan diagram shows for this property, when the Court of Appeals and Knutson say it's unclear. So that's the same rationale that caused the hearings official to find a conflict between the metro plan diagram rather than the metro plan diagram making, rather than the refinement plan diagram, making the metro plan diagram more specific, as the Court of Appeals says it should. With that, I think I'll pass to Rick, and he'll follow up with a couple of comments.
Yeah, and if I create some holes, you then you'll come back.
I'll fill your holes, too.
Thank you. Mr. Belcher, appreciate your question. We sure miss the council chambers, don't we? So, Mr. Belcher, you asked a second que, I think, if I heard you correctly, you asked an excellent question, and that was, is the whole of the ridgeline, or is the whole of the UGB, parks and open space, as was, I think, alluded to by one of the other individuals who provided testimony? All you need to do, and you may have already done this, all you need to do is look at any of the four metro plan diagrams before you, and you'll see that there are significant portions of the urban growth boundary that have no green next to them. Even in the neighborhood of this immediate parcel, you look to the east, you'll see that even in the neighborhood of Moon Mountain, city parkland, to the east, the northeast of us, there is no green along the urban growth boundary. So it's clear that there is no correlation between the diagram and any policy requirement regarding that the ridge, that the urban growth boundary is to protect resources, i.e., one of the resources being the ridgeline. Mr. Borowski, you ask an excellent question, I believe, if I heard you correctly, that the, does the UGB follow the ridgeline? You'll find that there is no correlation, no consistent correlation between the location of an urban, the urban growth boundary anywhere in South Eugene and the physical ridgeline. As Mr. Close pointed out, with this specific parcel in reference, the urban growth boundary was defined with a meets-and-bounds legal definition that was mandated through by, it was a combination of the Boundary Commission, the city of Eugene, and in particular, Lane County. All three weighed in on that 2007 annexation. Took an extra year to process it, but in the end, a legal definition was created and then agreed upon by the applicant and the local jurisdictions to define the urban, to fix the urban growth boundary along, adjacent to the subject property. And you'll see in any of the drawings, if you just refer back to the slope analysis in the handout number one, where you can readily see the contours and the landform, that the urban growth boundary does not follow the ridgeline. In fact, the ridgeline with respect to this property is not on our property. For the majority of our east-west distance, the ridgeline, the physical ridgeline is south of our property. Now, Mr. Duncan, you asked a question, excuse me, Mr. Mills, I'm going backwards with the order in which I took notes here. Mr. Mills, you asked a question, I believe, you made a reference to one of metro plan policies, I think, I didn't write it down, I think it was 2G-9.
Sounds right.
And there was a reference with respect to parks and open space. You'll note that in the definition, in the metro plan text, the definition of that says that parks and open space, there's a number of ways in which the open space policy, the text, can be addressed in specific development applications. One of them was through dedication. That's one of the alternatives in the text of the metro plan, that the parks and open space policy can be addressed by dedication. Hence, even through all six of the applicant site plans, we never once shied away from open space dedication from our south property line, which in this case happens to be coincident with UGB. You'll see that there, it varies from plan to plan, but you'll see in every plan, there is an open space component along our southern property line. So we took, looked at the text of the metro plan policy, and it says that there are a number of ways that that can be addressed. We said this can work, and hence, there's the open space dedication, and it now is an outright public dedication of open space. Originally, it wasn't, but about Plan 2 or 3, it became, we always turned up the burner a little bit and trying to make things a little more attractive to the community, and it's now nearly 33 acres of that 121-acre site is proposed to be dedicated to the public. And lastly, Mr. Duncan, you asked about sheet number seven in our site analysis set of ones. Has been made, as we've tried to make clear, it is, no one can scale up the metro plan from its 11-by-17-inch scale and use it to determine the location of a land use designation. You can't do that. We did, in our initial site analysis, we did scale it up. But I will tell you, as the one who did it, I'll never do it again, but as the one who did it, we scaled it up, but we had to stretch it. We had to stretch it because the topography didn't fit, the parcel boundaries didn't fit, the metro plan diagram didn't fit, but we stretched it up. And as a designer, one of the things we do early on in every one of our projects is we do a thorough analysis of the physical conditions. We looked at soils. We looked at topography. We looked at drainage. We looked at the geology. We looked at adjacent parcels. We looked at utilities, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. One of the things we looked at was planning and zoning, but we never, it never once implied that that was an appropriate location for any type of a designation. We looked at it as information, and indeed, we used it. It helped us inform the open space component of the PUD proposal. Again, looking at the text, Policy 2G-9 says that dedication of lands is one way to address the open space requirement.
I'm going to make two final points. In my, our appeal statement, we... In my, our appeal statement, we go from the hearings official's decision where we think he misstated the critical question. Page eight of his decision, he says, quote, "The fundamental question presented by the applicant's zone change request is whether the city council intended to apply a parks and open space designation to the property, the subject property and adjacent lands in the adopted MetroPlan diagram. If so, was it the city council's intent to allow the Laurel Hill plan to obviate that decision through a refinement of the MetroPlan?" So the first sentence is a good question. The second sentence is where he leaves the tracks. Here's the question he should have posed. This is my creation. "The fundamental question presented by the applicant's zone change request is whether the city council intended to apply a parks and open space designation to the subject property and adjacent lands in the adopted MetroPlan diagram." That's exactly what he said. Now, the second sentence would be, under the Knutson rule, "If the MetroPlan diagram is unclear, because it shows a boundary between two plan designations near the subject property line, does the Laurel Hill plan clarify the intention of the city council?" That's the correct question to ask, and the answer is yes. The, actually, I have three points. The second point has to do with the comment made by opponents that you, because we now have a 2010 MetroPlan diagram, really, it's a 2004 MetroPlan diagram that's been maybe updated parcel by parcel. Because we now have a 2004 MetroPlan diagram, it was adopted by the city councils by the Housekeeping Amendments, that overrides an earlier refinement plan, this one in particular from 1982, an antique. There's no basis for saying that. If you look at the sequence of things, the very first MetroPlan diagram was adopted in 1980. It substantially, it was submitted for acknowledgement. It's substantially the same as the 2004 one, which respected this property, was a UGB line, little bit of green poking over in, passed to the north side of the UGB. But just because we've adopted, readopted a MetroPlan diagram in 2004, it doesn't invalidate the 1982 refinement plan. If that's the case, then each refinement plan that's near and dear to the several commissioners here who represent neighborhood organizations, those refinement plans would go out the window too. That's not the way to think of it. MetroPlan is a framework plan, includes a MetroPlan diagram, includes valid refinement plans, they all come with different dates, they make a cohesive policy. My last comment goes back to my first comment, which is, ask the staff where the line is. If the staff thinks that there is a piece of this property that is planned as a parks and open space, ask them where it is. Map it. When they map it, ask them how they drew the line. A, I don't think they will map it. And that's because, the answer to the second question, which is, they don't know how to map it. There's no basis for drawing that line accurately and being able to defend it. It would just be a policy choice made on the fly, and you, and, and, and when you're, when you're, don't make a judgment, you don't make, this is not the time to be making a policy decision about what the plan designation is. As the city attorney has repeated often in writing and verbally, every piece of ground has a plan designation. The question is figuring out what it is. So you don't, you don't make a policy choice on the fly. So, there is a line out there, and your challenge is to find it. And since staff said it's their job to make a suggestion where it is, ask them where it is. Ultimately, it's your call. It's a shame we're a year and a half into this application and nobody's drawn that line yet. Thank you.
And in that regard, reinforcing exactly what Mr. Close just said, we did ask. We asked staff with every one of our three submittals, if there's a green line, where is it? Where's the difference between one designation and the other? We asked every single time, and staffs wouldn't tell us. They didn't tell us, they either couldn't or were unwilling, but we very clearly asked every single time. We said, where's the difference, where's the line between one designation and another? Please tell us. We almost begged, please tell us where it is, and then we can generate a site plan in response. They never told us where it was. They did say, they did keep pointing to the MetroPlan diagram and said, pay attention to the green, pay attention to the green, pay attention to the green. Well, we did pay attention to the green. As pointed out in the MetroPlan text, 2G9, that there are a number of ways in which the green can be addressed, and one of them is through dedication of property, and that is how we're proposing to do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing. And in this case, based on the 120-day time limit ending October 22nd, 2013, we will also close the record. And our deliberations are set for October 7th and October 14th. At this point, I'd like to ask if any commissioners have questions for staff, if we need additional information or clarifications that are warranted that staff can respond to at our deliberations. Commissioner Belcher.
Well, I'd like staff to respond to the statement that you were asked three times to delineate the line, and you allegedly didn't, and I'd like to hear your response.
Absolutely. Yes, the staff was asked, and we asked the applicant, well, where do you think it is? And they produced SA 7.0, and we said, well, that's a good starting point. Why don't you? And, yeah, and that's where we left it. And we did repeatedly point back to the green as a, as a way to remind them to pay attention to the parks and open space, so that is accurate.
Sure. So what about the assertion that when they did submit this plan with dedicated open space, that they were thereby saying, that's where the line is? Does that suffice?
That's what they were asserting. In the staff report, we didn't agree that that sufficed.
I'll give a little bit of time for the commission if there are any other questions. Commissioner Baker.
Well, regarding this diagram, did you analyze it relative to the elevations of the ridgeline, you know, the discussion about polygons and so forth?
No, we did not analyze that in relation to elevations, although the applicant did in their materials also provide a map that delineated all the elevations and color coded them. So they have another map in their application materials that looks similar to the green map, but it's different colors, but shows the 900-foot level, 800-foot level, and 700-foot level also, but their development didn't respond to that either.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, if I could, at some time, get a response to the issue in rezoning of the whole property, as I understand it, would it matter if the line was one foot or 200 foot in? Because I think that might even be irrelevant to what they were proposing in the zone change for the whole thing. And I just need to have a response to that.
Commissioner Barofsky.
So I guess I'm just a little unclear. So if, if an applicant comes to staff and says, I'm looking at the MetroPlan, and there's a green line that says that possibly there's open space on, on a property that I own, and they come to you and say, where is it at? You go back to them and say, you tell me. And then if they tell, and then they come back to you and tell you, and then you say, no, that's not right, then they have to go back and say, how about this? I mean, is it?
No, it's a little, actually, when they, when they produced this, we didn't say this wasn't right. We said this is a great starting point, and, but they, their development never responded to that. Again, this isn't the adopted version. This is just a kind of a, in the discussions, a place we were.
I guess I'm just trying to get to the process of, how do you find the line?
Well, I back up a little bit and try to remind the commission about the applicant's burden in a case like this as part of a privately initiated zone change request. Ultimately, it is their burden to show how their proposal for zoning meets the criteria, which includes MetroPlan compliance, looking at the diagram, which of course involves interpretation in cases like this, as well as the refinement plan and other criteria. It's really their obligation to make a case for whether it meets those criteria or not. And so, we did provide guidance early on and consistently throughout the process that encouraged them to provide what they believed to be a reasonable interpretation of that. We, in fact, in our staff recommendation, pointed to this map and noted that, you know, their own evidence in the form of the site-specific scaled map provided what we believe to be a reasonable representation of what was shown on the MetroPlan diagram.
And then my second question is, goes to the dedication of open space. So, is, was that in one of the other proposals, the, either the PUD thing, or would, would that, so that wouldn't be part of the zone change dedication?
Frankly, from staff's perspective, it was more an issue with respect to the PUD proposal, the proposal to meet certain South Hill study policies and other requirements throughout the other applications. It just so happened to coincide with a parks and open space designation, but from the beginning, we disagreed as to its efficiency in covering the designation we saw in the MetroPlan. I mean, I think I'd also add a clarifying point in terms of the hearings official's decision, that based on my read of his analysis, he at no point relied on this map and relied solely on the MetroPlan diagram. So as you think about these appeal issues and deliberate on the matter, I think you should focus in on that, in terms of whether he erred or not.
Right.
Just to understand what he did and didn't do.
Right. Right. And that's, and that's what I'm looking at. I mean, if I, if there is a decision that he did err, then we have to say why. And so.
Okay. Commissioner Belcher, then Commissioner Jaworski.
I hesitate to ask this question, but I need to. Is it possible for the planning commission to determine where this line is, as part of our decision? The line between parks and open space and R1?
Well, I think, I think I'd recommend that you back up and think as a commission about what your task is on appeal and to determine whether the hearings official erred. It's not necessarily your obligation to resolve this in terms of defining a specific boundary for the proposed zoning. Really, I think the scope of your review is based on whether he erred in making a decision consistent with the approval criteria. So, my suggestion would be that the commission not feel obligated to do so in terms of defining a line on the property with regard to the POS designation.
But you didn't quite answer my question. Is it possible for us to do that? You said we're not obligated to.
So the code authorizes you to affirm, reverse, or modify. So to the extent that you can frame that as a modification of the hearings officer's decision, it's in the grand scheme part of your authority to do that.
That was the answer I was afraid I would get. Thank you.
I just got prompted also to mention that there, I mean, if you are going to go down that, there are issues with doing that, with the evidence in the record and what the arguments are on appeal and different things that would complicate that, but you have the authority to modify the decision.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, just at some time, clarify to me, I understand that if I own property that was R1, and I'm doing something, and I dedicate a portion of that R1 for open space, I'm dedicating open space, but my question is, am I still dedicating open space if it's already parks and open space designated land?
I could answer that now, actually, and the, and it would be, if you, if you dedicated it, you would need to dedicate it. The parks and open space designation doesn't in itself designate the land, so you would have to go through the physical act of dedicating it.
As I understand the term, as you're using it, that dedication that you'd be proposing would be an ownership issue in terms of granting land to the city, as opposed to implementing a parks and open space designation. So, Mr. Oaks is correct, that it doesn't necessarily dictate or require dedication in that sense, that it can be regulated through, for example, a PUD application.
I have myself in the queue. I had a question referring back, I know, to map SA 7.0, and the indication that staff told the applicant that that was a good starting point. Am I hearing staff then say that the actual site plans that were submitted did not match that as the amount of open space, location of open space, or, or that, and that was?
That is correct. In terms of the actual development proposal within the PUD, we found that it was both inconsistent with the, with the footprint of what we believe to be the parks and open space designation, but that that carried through to a series of other criteria related to tree preservation, steep slopes, and the like. And so, that combination of factors, we did thoroughly evaluate through the PUD staff report.
Okay. Thank you.
I also, just real quick, I also had that there are several other maps they did include that they did show to us. Some responded better than what they submitted, but they didn't submit them, so.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan.
I believe there was some discussion in the record that suggested that the reason that there was not sort of a dual zone change request, one to R1, one to park and open space, is that the applicant believes that they have the right under Knutson to push it to the property line. If, in fact, I'll lay back up on that, make sure I'm staying within record, would they have been required to rezone the entire property to some city designation versus leaving a portion of the property as AGT? Meaning that portion that they might have thought was park and open space?
I'm not sure how to answer the question.
Well, think about it. I don't need it now.
Okay. There are a number of options they could have proposed. That's a hypothetical, I'm not sure.
Well, it's okay. If you tell me you can't answer it, I'll be okay with that too.
All right.
I'm trying to keep it within what I believe's in the record.
Okay. Any other questions?
Commissioner Duncan, could I rephrase your question back to, so I know I understand it?
Sure.
So you were asking if they had, if they had left the, like, say, the part that we, that could be designated for parks and open spaces, AG, could have they have rezoned the rest to low density?
Yes, because they would have been requesting a zone change on a portion of a tax lot, or portions of tax lots.
I, I think that would have been possible. The question for us would have been how that then is addressed in the context of the PUD, the actual development application.
I was just more interested in the zone change versus, I understand that.
But in doing so, they would have had to define that boundary.
Okay.
Okay, I think that.
I got one more, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Barofsky.
Getting back to the, the line, so in an answer to one of the other commissioners, you said that, that this was a good starting pla, yes, that this was a good starting place, and you said, they submitted and it didn't fit your view of what the parks and open space line was. So staff does have an idea of what they feel the line is, because you just stated that, right?
Well, I think, I think, and hopefully this will clarify, we, in our staff report and our recommendation of the hearings official, agreed that this was, in fact, a reasonable representation of where that line existed on the property. I'm not sure if I misspoke earlier, but that what I was referring to is their development plans and the associated applications, which we felt were inconsistent by showing multifamily developments, streets, and other impacts within that area, as opposed to protections.
Okay. So you, so when you spoke-- So you, so when you spoke and said, we didn't feel, felt that it was up to, that it met the criteria, you were saying it didn't fall into this line, and that's kind of the line that you guys are, or that, that swatch?
What we found with respect to the PUD was that there was a significant amount of development within the green swath that we believed to exist on the property, and that that was inconsistent with the criteria.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, and this is, you don't have to answer this now, too, you can, but when we've looked at.
Could you speak into the?
Yeah, when we've looked at other zonings that are, or, when you're looking at providing protection for the ridgeline, do you, is there a tendency to follow contour lines? In other words, you know, you try to get above a certain elevation and capture that area? Is that, you know, as part of, you know, the ridgeline study, you may have looked at that in the past?
That could have been an approach that the applicant could have taken there, because they did, they did actually provide information related to that. That's, it wasn't the approach, but that could have been one of, combined with other issues, could have been one way to say that's the area that should be protected.
Frankly, in the, in the South Hill study policies, which speak to protections along the ridgeline in a general sense, there are terms used like, you know, protection in areas of, of steeper slopes and higher elevations, so it's not so specific or defined in, in a way that we could pick a particular contour. There's some subjectivity involved in that.
We will reconvene to deliberate on this Monday, October 7, at 11:30 a.m. in the Slot Room in the atrium building. And I want to thank you all for coming tonight, and we're adjourned.